The Habit of Grace Planning Commission Meeting for The Habit of Grace Planning Commission Meeting for November 21st, 2024 will now come to order. I'll call the roll. Ed Garona.
Here.
Warren Hartenstein is absent. For Hot Shaw announced that she would be absent tonight. Chip Place.
Here.
Janice Chan.
Here.
Councilwoman Tammy Schnegus announced earlier that she would not be able to be here tonight. And Harry Miller.
Here.
Harry Miller is our alternate and he will be serving tonight as a regular commission member. We do have a quorum. The first item on our agenda tonight is our consideration of the proposed zoning amendment recommend for the RO district under group living as a conditional use. And it seeks to define also under group living, one of the conditions would be community residential facility. And we're going to look at a definition for that. And we're going to look at what all would be included under group living. So I'll turn it over to you.
Sure. We met last month and discussed this and there were a couple of questions, but there was also the discussion to more narrowly tailor this definition to what the project, the folks at Mount Zion are seeking. In that past month, I toured another facility in the RO zoning district called Harbor of Grace. It's on a corner of Gerard and Union. And they're doing some, some exact same things and providing same services that are being proposed by the, the folks that'll work on this Mount Zion project. And it looks like those were things that just sort of evolved over time and, and that, that seemed to work at that location. So I'm not sure that they're, what they're doing is allowed in the code and I don't necessarily want to go into that tonight, but I think what's important is that for this definition is that we're probably going to have to recognize if we're interested in what the, the folks at Mount Zion had discussed, bringing that in, but then also creating the definition in some way to make sure that this Harbor of Grace project is also in compliance. So the first thing is on the information I provided you, there's a couple of pieces of paper I'd placed in front of you. Volney and I had spoke last week on Friday and we discussed removing dormitory and fraternity and sorority houses from the list of items in group living. So you see those are redlined. In group living, it says a facility providing residential occupancy, right there it says on a monthly or longer basis. I believe the transitional housing that's occurring at Harbor of Grace, the, the, it's their crisis unit. I think people are staying up there, in there for up to a week to two weeks. So I'm not sure if we want to modify that definition based on, on the services they're providing currently. And then one thing we had mentioned was community residential facility. That is currently defined in our code. It was passed into ordinance in May 2010. So I've provided you that definition to, to look at tonight. It does not seem to include in that definition anything that would concern veteran housing or anything like that. It seems to be really focused on physical and developmental disabilities, dependent children, elderly individuals. So we may need to make some, have some discussion on, on that definition as well. And then at the very bottom, under, oh, it says group living provided that. And there's that item about Historic Preservation Commission getting to, to take a look at historic properties when this is something that's going to occur. Again, that was something that was based on the, the Mount Zion site. The Historic Preservation Commission has already went out and looked at the site and noted some things there. So they just wanted to be able to comment on the development before it occurred. I just have a number two there just to see if there's anything specific that all of you have in, in mind in the future that should be looked at as a conditional use. So one thing could be, and this is just, I'm just kind of throwing out ideas to, to maybe get some, some thoughts going here. Maybe the, there don't, there doesn't need to be these facilities so many in like one compact area. So I don't know if we want to have, you know, consider what is appropriate for the zoning district, two, three, four, should they be a certain distance apart, no more than a thousand feet with each other or 2,000 feet with each other. So not that you have to adopt any of those rules or anything at all. I just wanted to, to note that there in case there was some discussion of something that you guys wanted Board of Appeals to look at specifically when examining the conditional use for this area. So that's it. I'll take any questions.
One question is, so, so community residential facility definition on this other piece, piece of paper is in our ordinance is now.
Yep.
And the group living would be a new category that's being created by this ordinance? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And the only little technical thing is the last word in that paragraph to match the term should be senior living, not senior housing. Because down below you got senior living. Was that?
Where do you see senior housing?
Line 60.
Well, it, under group living.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Where it says does not include senior housing and it, it obviously what you meant was it does not include the next definition below, which is senior living.
I got you. Thank you.
Yeah. So just change that to senior living.
Got it.
And so let's go back to the vet, to the, anything having to do with veterans' housing. How do, how do we want to include that if we?
Yeah. So Mount Zion and Harbor of Grace would, they both would serve veterans. Harbor of Grace also serves first responders.
Well, I mean, any kind of facility that's there to help people would obviously not exclude a veteran. I mean, a veteran is just another citizen that, that has a need, right? So should, should we consider under group living a group veteran facility? I mean, just they want to live together because they're veterans and they, they can't afford to live anywhere else. Is that?
I, well, I think, I mean, this is for both, for both places, it's transitional housing. So it's not permanent. So
Got it.
Yeah. It's a place for, for them to live while they receive certain services and things to help them kind of get back on their, on their feet.
What we're proposing here will certainly take care of them. Is that right? We'll certainly include them.
I'm not, so if, if, if we would think that this transitional housing goes under community residential facility, I don't think that it would because it looks like that just deals with physical developmental disabilities, dependent children or elderly individuals. So I think we would either need to include in group living transitional housing for veterans and first responders or in community residential facility, add that into that definition.
Okay.
Again, that, that's, you know, that's if, if this is the direction that the Planning Commission wants to, would like to go with their recommendation.
Now, number two under group living provided that. We've got a number one and you asked the question at the bottom, are there any other conditions? And I just sat before the meeting and wrote, provided that, and I'm just using my own language here, provided that surrounding neighborhood impacts have been taken into account, including loitering, noise, increased vehicular activity, or undesirable exterior human behavior. And then you also proposed that perhaps we just add one more item in that list and that would be the density of, of existing facilities of the same nature. Not sure that's the best wording, but in other words, what that would do is that just allows us to take those things into account. It doesn't mean that you can or can't approve something with those. But if, if, if somebody comes in here with, with a proposal that we know is going to be burdensome on the neighborhood, it's going to cause trouble. And we've got a bunch of neighbors sitting right out here getting ready to testify that that's going to be the case. And why? We, it would seem to me that we need some language in here that says, yes, we can take that into account. Now I'm going to shut up and let the rest of the commissioners talk.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have one question.
Yes.
Are you thinking about adding that veterans slash first responders at the bottom of the community residential facility description or definition?
That's right. Yeah. I could either add it there or under group living where it says examples of included uses, I could add in transitional housing for veterans and first responders.
Do you think that limits us if we, if we start adding specific things in? I mean, right now it's kind of general?
Yeah. I mean, so that was, the definition started general, but then at the last meeting I was kind of given the direction to sort of more narrowly cater it. So we can leave it general, although I think, I think what is occurring, the uses at Harbor of Grace that's occurring now and what Mount Zion are proposing doesn't exist in the group living or community residential facility definition.
Okay.
Yeah. It seems to, because it, it does, I mean, and it's, it's not, this isn't what they're proposing, but it does say, let me see here. Uh, yeah. So it does not include halfway house, crisis residential center, or secure community transition facility.
Right.
So I think, I, we, I don't think we define what those things are, but I, I think what is occurring at Harbor of Grace and what Mount Zion is proposing falls under the does nots more than it does under the, the does.
Okay. So he's pushing it a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
I get it.
Yeah. It's, it's really a decision of whether to put it in the specific line item or put it in the, in the, in the general definition. Anybody else?
Uh, yeah. I have a couple of things. Just, Tim, to clarify, section, I didn't bring my code book for the first time in a while. Section 205 dash 24 is, is what? Is that the RO zone or?
Yes. 205 24 would be conditional uses in the RO zoning district.
Okay. All right. So we're, one thing is we're talking about clarifying the definition here. And the other thing is there, are there any additional conditions we want to examine?
That's correct.
So in terms of the definition, and we did want to tailor this narrowly, but we have an existing use and a proposed use that are both similar.
That's correct.
And they're both veteran slash emergency responder, community transition facilities. Or transition facilities.
Both will deal with veterans. Only one will deal with first responders. The, the current existing use deals with first responders also.
So if we wanted to have that use also conform, we would, might want to add that into the definition.
Right.
So right now halfway houses are not permitted. Crisis residential, crisis residential centers are not permitted, probably anywhere in town. Is that correct?
Anything in the zoning code that isn't specifically allowed in any district would be allowed in the industrial district.
Ah, in the industrial district. Okay. All right. And secure community transitional facilities are not allowed. Except in the industrial.
That's correct.
So, and so given that this is the RO zone and we're looking to make this narrow, we would probably keep the language does not include halfway houses, crisis residential center.
Probably get rid of secure community transition facility?
You could do that and then you could, in the first, well, in the last sentence, you might include, may include specialized group home for developmentally disabled, group care facility for children, boarding home, and transitional facilities for veterans and
First responders.
First responders.
Perfect.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
Makes sense to me.
That's where I was putting it.
All right. So then in terms of any additional conditional uses, it might be, if you have it handy, it might be helpful, Tim, if you could go through the criteria for approving a conditional use. Because some of this might already be covered.
That's right. Yeah. I think, I think some of the things Volney had mentioned are in the findings in chapter 25 17B. I can, I can read some of those now if you guys are interested.
Yeah.
Yep. Let me just pull. Let me just pull that up in the code. Sorry.
Yeah. I was looking for it too.
It would be 25? All right. So will not be, so this is 25 17B3, will not be detrimental to the use peaceful enjoyment, economic value, or development of surrounding properties, or the general neighborhood, will cause no objectionable noise, vibrations, fumes, odors, dust, toxicity, glare, or physical activity. Will not adversely, this is 25 17B6, will not adversely affect the health, safety, security, morals, or general welfare of the residents, visitors, or workers in the area. So I think, I think those two probably encompass a lot of what was mentioned.
Yeah. Those are pretty broad. Gives the Board of Appeals a lot of discretion.
Is that satisfied?
Yeah. It's probably more a question to you, Mr. Chairman, is what Tim recited there covered the additional conditions that you were?
Yeah. I was just trying to, to provide a framework for the, for us to reasonably oppose something that was going to cause problems to the neighborhood and have a leg to stand on. And you, you're the one with a law degree. What do you think?
Yeah. I think the, the existing conditions are pretty clear on that point and gives the Board of Appeals a lot of discretion.
I'd be satisfied with that.
All right.
Tim, I have one more question. The part that does not include, does not include halfway houses, et cetera, is that listed in that, that particular group of specific places? Is that listed under the industrial zone?
No. So the way our code is written, so it, it just general kind of zoning stuff, you, you can't really outlaw anything and you can't sort of accidentally outlaw something or, or kind of backdoor outlaw. You kind of put yourself up for, for a lawsuit. So since the city doesn't want to prohibit anything, then what they say is that there's a line, I think at the very end of the conditional uses in the industrial, industrial district that says anything else, not explicitly allowed anywhere else in any other zoning district in the code is allowed by conditional use in the industrial district.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
You have anything to say? Mr. Miller, what, what do you think of this?
I agree with what Chip said.
Are you turned on?
Again, if, if it's our interest to add this to the RO district, as long as it's licensed in a conditional use, I don't have any problem.
And just one other thing. Under, under definition of group living, this on a monthly or longer basis, is that something that we want to look at changing the time on there or, or removing that altogether? Since it sounds like the existing facility is, is providing transitional housing or, or crisis housing on a, on a lower basis, on a smaller amount of time?
I think, it would seem to me that if, if we're going to allow the use and allow the activity, that trying to make it an even shorter amount of time is not going to make any difference because it's, as long as it's not just a permanent residence. In other words, if, you know, whether it's one month or whether it's six months or whether it's one year, it's still the same sort of folks that are occupying there and under the same conditions and the same controls and the same management.
Yeah. I agree.
And so what difference does it make if one comes out and the other comes in? You agree?
I agree. So
Okay.
What, what's the, you know, who's the watchdog of that anyhow? You're going to have somebody sitting outside counting who goes in and out and how long they stayed there? I mean, what's the, if there's no enforcement, it doesn't really matter, does it?
I get your point. I guess it just, yeah. I mean, I, I understand your point. I guess just if it needs to be there in case.
I think it.
That's what I'm saying. I'm, I'm not up to changing it is what I'm saying. I, I think it's fine the way it is because there's not necessarily a watchdog. And again, if it's licensed and conditional, I'm agreeing with the group. I don't see a problem.
What's in this, in the ordinance can, can, is enforceable if the activity becomes a problem and it can be demonstrated that they are exceeding what's in the ordinance. It's not like we got to have them certify every single time a person comes in there that they, they left on this day and they came on this day and all this kind of thing.
In this case, it wouldn't be exceeding. It would be not meeting.
Well, whatever.
Because it says a month or more. And I guess the problem is you guys are worried about
Yeah.
A week. But again.
Yeah. I don't know that we need a time limit. Let's face it, you know, hospice's limit is identified under here too. And people in hospice often don't last a month.
Yeah.
Or they can last six months.
Or they could, yeah.
Yeah.
They could last indefinitely.
Yeah.
Maybe we, maybe we just eliminate the time.
Now,
Great.
Representatives of, of the group that wanted to put a facility in a local church structure, I believe there perhaps are, many of them are here tonight. My question to you is, what we're discussing doing here, does this completely allow what they were seeking to do?
I, I believe so, but I guess, you know, if you're open for it, they could speak for themselves if they'd like to speak.
I mean, in your opinion, I mean.
I, I think so.
Okay. Okay.
I've, I've had emails back and forth with people at the chap organization and with Mount Zion Church. And I've, I think presented this definition to them as previously written and now that we've refined it, I, I believe it meets the.
Another way to put the question is if this was all passed by city council, would you grant them?
If they'd have to go to Board of Appeals, but yeah, I think, I think they'd be good to go.
Yeah. Okay. Now, any other questions or comments from commissioners at this point? Okay.
Yeah. Go ahead, Ed.
My only thought was that it, it just seems like there are so many classes of individuals or classes or groups of people and definitions and it, it's, it's kind of, to me, it's fairly confusing as to, and, and I would think that the right person could name their group just about any way they wanted to, to fit one of these categories. That, that's my concern. I, I'm not sure, you know, exactly how to address that other than, you know, halfway house, crisis, residential center, transition facility, specialized group. I mean, to me, there, there are so many different definitions, it's kind of hard to get a handle on.
Show me the group and I'll show you the ordinance.
Right. Type thing. So.
Yeah.
Well, I think in this case though, this particular use is not permitted, except in an industrial zone.
Right.
And so if we want to allow it in the RO district or anywhere else except the industrial zone, we, we have to make a place for it. And, and in doing so, you don't necessarily want to open the door to too many other unanticipated uses. So I think that's one reason why we're going through this exercise, to allow this particular use, one of which already exists, one of which it sought to exist, but we don't permit it. So we, if we want to permit it, we have to write it into the code.
Would they have to, are you saying they'd have to go through the Board of Appeals? Is that?
Yeah. Because it would be a conditional use, correct, Tim?
Yes.
That's correct.
Okay.
So, and then they have to meet all the conditions of a, of a conditional use, what Tim just recited a few minutes ago.
Yeah. There's 10 findings under chapter 25, section 17B that we have to review. And we also ask for a, a letter from the applicant that they address all those 10 findings and how they meet those, those items. So they would discuss a lot of things like how they would, how they'd not affect the neighborhood, like a lot of things that Volney was, was getting at with, I don't know, people sitting outside in front, you know, smoking or drinking on the street, like how, how they'd sort of keep everything contained and deal with a lot of those issues and stigmas that come along with this sort of stuff in the community.
And I take it that these types of groups, parking and vehicles are not an issue? Is that?
Until they let us know exactly how many rooms there's going to be and, and how the offices are going to be used, we can't do a determination. So I think they'd have to come back for a site plan review because it would be a change in use and, and something maybe more intense than a church. But there is parking on, on the side of Mount Zion Church. And I believe that they may have been also in discussions with the, the colored school museum, but I, I can't, I can't say that for sure. But until we have a, an actual site plan.
But no, no discussion of the number of vehicles that would be in use or?
We haven't had that. We haven't went that far yet. Nope. We haven't had that sort of discussion yet.
Because parking in an, in an, in an area or a neighborhood can.
Yeah. There is, there is a lot of parking currently on the lane on the side of Mount Zion Church. I mean, there, there is onsite parking. So I, I know that they would have some and it was enough to, I mean, I guess I wasn't, I don't know if I was here yet, not, not yet when Mount Zion was active, but it was apparently enough parking to, you know, handle church services.
On Sunday.
On Sundays.
Does that cover everybody?
Right. The only other comment, just thinking ahead a little bit, if the hospital district becomes its own zone, then we might, we're going to have to figure out how to, how all this fits together. Do these kind of, do we expand the hospital zone to cover Mount Zion and the other one? Or do we include these kind of uses in both the RO and the?
Yeah. That'd be another way to limit it too, like I was mentioning with, they have to be a certain distance apart or, or only so many in a district.
Right.
If both of these would be allowed in that expanded district and only the conditional use in that area, then that would mean that rest of the RO district going both ways down Union Avenue wouldn't allow this type of
Right.
Development.
Not something to make a decision on today, but to think about.
Good point. Yep. Okay.
Okay. Does that cover all of us? Okay. Now, I'm sure there's some folks here of Okay, now, I'm sure there's some folks here that want to speak to this issue. You spoke to us before. It would probably, I think you've sat and listened to us and heard that that we, in essence, are doing everything we can to make the kind of project that you are proposing feasible and allowable. And so I'm hoping that your mission is accomplished. But if anybody would like to come up and add anything or speak to that, feel free. And just give us your name and your address, please.
Good evening, lady and gentlemen of this council. My name is Jack Burkeridge, 612 Carpenter's Point Road, Perryville, Maryland. First of all, want to start off by thanking any veterans that are in this room tonight. I am the CEO of Communities Helping Empower Patriots, People and Professionals, otherwise known as CHAP. This has been quite the journey. I just want to thank you all for your time, your service and your consideration of this project. Only thing I'd like to add is, as this comes to fruition, on behalf of every member of our organization, we're Hartford and Cecil County citizens, which means we know we have an awesome responsibility to be good neighbors. Many of our associates live in Haverty Grace, they are members of the Haverty Grace community. So I know there's a lot of stereotypes, thoughts, opinions and passion that come with these types of discussions. But we are a responsible organization. We love our veterans and that's who we choose to serve, those who have served us. And again, just truly grateful, Tim, for all of your help, guidance, support over the last year. Certainly, all of the members of the Mount Zion and the church and the community, Councilman Roberts, Robertson, and again, all of you, thank you very much for your time. Do you have any questions for me before?
I think, I think we're there.
Thanks for doing what you're doing.
No, thank you, guys, appreciate it.
So much. And thank you all for coming. Now, I've got to decide that we need to.
Anyone else? Anyone else?
If anyone's in opposition.
That's right. I can't imagine, well, would anybody else like to speak to this? Yes, sir, please. No, you're good? Yes?
Jason Robertson, 414 Bourbon Street. I just actually had a question for the Mount Zion folks pertaining to the parking. You guys have that lot across the street from the church as well as the lane? Does that lot go with the sale of the building as well?
Yeah, a lot is on the backside of the church.
Yeah, all right. So there, in addition to the lane parking, there's also an additional lot, just to keep that in mind, in mind too. And I think that to Tim's point, that might be something that the Board of Appeals will have to discuss later on, once a site plan is presented to them. But thank you all for your time and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, council member.
Would anyone else like to say anything from the public? Hearing nothing, hearing none? Now, we've got to decide, we need to decide, do we need to vote on a specific recommendation? Because we've sort of massaged this thing in the last half hour.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the motion would look like, but I guess there should be a recommendation. Well, so the rule is there should be a recommendation to the mayor and council or it comes from the ex officio member and she's not here tonight.
Would you like me to offer a motion?
Why not?
Yes, go ahead.
All right. And then I guess at the end, Volney, I mean, if you wanted to take this responsibility, I can take these items that we discussed and that is coming from Chip's motion. And I can give that to you to look at and you can say, yeah, that's what we, that's what we agreed and discussed.
That's the thing is trying to craft this into a specific motion or you would have the option of just voting to allow your chair to work with Tim and craft a letter that passes on the sense of our meeting tonight.
Yeah, I guess the main recommendation, if I'm reading the room right, is that you would be approving to revisions in this law to allow transitional housing for veterans and first responders as a conditional use.
You still would like to offer a motion?
Well, maybe I can, I can try to recite some of the things we've discussed.
Yeah, I think that'd be great.
Okay. Under the proposed definition of group living, we have recommended to delete the monthly requirement, if you all agree. And then we agreed to, we agreed to edit the group living does not include senior housing to group living does not include senior living. And we are retaining the edits of eliminating dormitory and fraternity and sorority houses from group living. And then in the definition of community residential facility, in the last sentence, which discusses may include, we are adding veterans and first responders' transition facilities. And I don't think, I think we agreed that there's probably, aside from the Historic Preservation Commission, additional conditions that the existing criteria under approval for a conditional use is satisfactory to review these.
Sounds concise enough. Can I hear a second to that motion?
I second.
A discussion on the motion. Hearing none, we'll vote on the motion. Let's start with, at the other end, Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Chan?
Yes.
Mr. Place?
Yes.
Mr. Corono?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. That concludes this hearing. Thank you very much for coming. You're welcome to stay and watch the rest of the action. And we have one more item on our agenda tonight, and that's brought by Popeyes Restaurant, 1101 Pulaski Highway. This is building permit number 20230093. And it's a request for an extension of the site plan approval that was granted in the past. You want to give us the details on that?
Yeah, just briefly, directly next to Harbor, sorry, excuse me, the existing Harbor Shops. They carved out a, an out parcel for a Popeyes that was approved by this group. Nothing has changed in their site plan, there's just been a delay, they can maybe discuss that more. What has happened since is there was the approval for Harbor Shops 2, which would be the area behind this. That was anticipated when this out parcel was carved out. And then this group put conditions in their approval that would help mitigate impacts from the larger development there. So from the department's perspective, there's not been a change and we would recommend the the extension.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of? Mr. Borse here? Okay.
I'll just say, before I became a member of the commission, I came to observe. And that was the first project that I observed here. And actually, it was one of the best applications I've seen still to date.
Hey, I believe we have a person here representing the applicant. And would you please step up and give us your name and address?
Good evening, my name is Eliza Hertzmark. Address 901 Delaney Valley Road, Suite 801, Towson, Maryland 21204.
All right.
So briefly, we previously received site plan approval with an expiration date of November 2024, so here we are. And we're here to request a formal extension of the approval. Would it be helpful if I just explain a little bit about what's been going on in the past two years? Seeing, seeing indications of yes. So at the time that we were here for planning commission two years ago, we had just submitted a traffic impact study to the Maryland State Highway Administration. There were a number of comments and revisions that our traffic consultant was working on with State Highway Administration. And the most recent action is that State Highway has made several recommendations, several conditions on their approval of the traffic impact study, such that they approved the traffic impact study and requested specific road improvements to Pulaski Highway. And so we are currently working through those requests in terms of pricing and potentially conversations with the shopping center. And that is why we're requesting the extension here.
And how long is this extension for now?
So the, we've requested a one-year extension. However, if you grant longer extensions, we are open to receiving a longer extension than one year.
I think we can only do two one-year extensions. Let me, let me look just to clarify.
Have we done a prior one?
No, the approval two years ago was the first approval. So we have not yet had an extension for this.
Give me just a second to look at the site plan ordinance.
The question is, is this their final extension or can they extend one more time?
Yeah, I think that's what he's checking.
And are we limited to one year or?
Give me one second. Two, up to two one-year extensions. So this would be their first one year, they would have to come back in another year.
So this is the second, so we need to change that on our?
No, 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 they were approved and then this is their first extension request. So they would get.
The first time they've asked for it.
Well, it says here, a one-year site plan extension was previously granted November 14th of 2022.
That, that must be a misprint because that was their original approval date. They came in on that date for their original approval. So that's a, that's a mistake on the agenda.
On the agenda?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, it does say here, may grant up to two one-year extensions.
Right, that's just a misprint from, that's a typo on our end, sorry about that.
So tonight is the first one. And you got one more shot at it. Can you, can you share anything with us about even a far out guesstimate about when you may start the project?
Mine would just be a guess.
We would like to start as soon as possible.
Sir, would you, yeah, just come up and give us your name. So we got, all this is on record, so we have to give us your name and address and then?
My name is Lawrence Ben Bassett, I am the applicant. I live at 20305 Foxwood Terrace, Germantown, Maryland 20876. The conditions that the S H A have imposed are quite costly. Want us to add a D cell lane and an acceleration lane that run the length of the existing shopping center and, and the length of the proposed shopping center. So we're talking about a lot of highway improvements that could cost several hundred thousand dollars and are really not in our budget. So we're trying to work with them. We're trying to figure out, maybe we can work with the shopping center and the proposed shopping center to see if they might be able to contribute to the cost. And that's the reason for the extension.
It's a, it's a reasonable situation. I mean, from our standpoint, I mean, when I say that, I mean, it's a reasonable reason to have to delete the project. That's what I'm trying to say. We understand.
The parcel that we have, the parcel that we have has an access off of Route 40, Pulaski Highway now, which we figured, you know, has been good all these years. You just come in and you go into the property.
Right.
You know, I think that this happens quite often. You see the DOTs, the S H A, you know, people want sidewalks, people want bus stops, people want, you know, whatever. They're taking a bite of the apple. You have a new development that needs a permit and so they're taking a shot. And it's quite extensive this time. And so we're trying to figure that out.
We understand your pain.
Today's economy, you know.
Okay.
It's tough.
You know, I would just observe, we, there's a few applications, not just yours. But yeah, there's the Harbor Places are called 2. There's Wawa and Car Wash. And it seems like the individual applicants are getting stuck, you know, and there's no comprehensive plan for, you know, how to deal with the highway improvements here. So it's a little, one, it just seems uncoordinated. And it seems perhaps unfair to some of the individual applicants when there's other people contributing. And I know at city council, we just had the discussion about the crazy intersection of, you know, Ontario and 155 and 40. And you drafted a letter that recommended, you know, a more comprehensive view in terms of not just traffic movement, but pedestrians and bikes, how does that all work? And it seems to, you know, extend even a little further.
Yeah, S H A has kind of a weird review format. So they'll have, they'll review an entire traffic impact statement. And they'll say, you know, you need to provide certain mitigation, even, you know, further down away from, from where you're going to be located. And that tends to be more, you're just kind of mitigating your impacts. And you can tell me if I'm wrong on this, there's this other piece for access permits. And so that is getting in and out of your place off of Route 40 or any state road is looked at differently. So they'll require a whole different set of mitigation or they won't allow you to use Route 40 as your entrance.
Right.
So it's these kind of two, two different parts of the same organization and they sort of hammer you on different things. There is this more kind of big picture look in how you're affecting the general area. And then they kind of can hammer you right on this access permit. So the same thing happened with Wawa. They, they came in, they discussed everything with us, discussed everything in the county, S H A. For some reason, the access permit people didn't originally look at it for some reason. So they, they came back in and required a longer D cell lane and an XL lane coming out of, on Route 40. The only thing is in front of their place, it's, they have smaller frontage. So it, it just costs them a bit less.
Yeah.
Am I accurate on that? Is that what's going on with you guys?
Pretty close. I will say that we haven't even applied for an access permit. So these comments were generated from just the baseline traffic impact study. And I think it's tricky here because the access into our site comes after a very long stretch, which is where they're asking for the D cell lane. And then when you leave the site, it, we're the last one there. So there's no one else who S H A could put it on yet to say, hey, make an acceleration lane. And so it's kind of all coming right to this, this, you know, sort of next frontier development site.
I can talk to you a little bit about this more, but there's another project where they've spoke to S H A about putting money in escrow. They were looking at specific improvements on I-95 on the off ramp. And they're allowing escrow payment just for their portion. So that may be a way out instead of having to do the whole thing. And then we can coordinate with the Harbor, Harbor Shops 2 development down the road.
Just to clarify, are you saying that it's almost like a fee in lieu of acknowledging that there are many improvements and if everyone sort of contributed a little bit?
You got it.
S H A could do it.
Yep.
That would be very.
Yeah, that would seem to make sense.
Of course you would.
We've done that in other places.
That's come from, this idea came from S H A that they've done in other, that they've doing in other places. So and the city said that they do have a mechanism to accept that escrow money, the fee in lieu. So that should be something you guys can discuss with them.
That's a great idea. Thank you.
Well, there are also other, I call them fee sharing arrangements where, like, when I, if there are four or five lots in a small subdivision and BG&E runs the electric back to. in a small subdivision, and BG and E runs the electric back to the first person's house, and then, you know, they, they kind of cost share with the other five lots when they come in to apply for their, uh, service. And so, um, perhaps with Harbor Shops or anybody else that uses that, uh, distance along Route forty, perhaps they could make arrangements to, um, get enough from several people rather than just the first person to come in.
Good luck.
No one wants to be the first person. Well, listen, um, thank you so much. If you have anything else to, to add, or?
No, I think that pretty much sums it up.
Questions? Do we have any questions of these folks?
No, I, I would just, more of an editorial comment, yeah, it would seem like it'd be, it should be on the state to coordinate their own improvements, and everybody involved, you know, chip in to, uh, to share, share the cost. And there's also, and I'll always mention is the pedestrian bike lane that's proposed along there, and how does all this fit together? And it's not your job to figure that out all out for the state.
Wasn't that on the other side of the road?
No, it's on our side.
Yeah.
That was, that was an original recommendation, but they did back down from that.
Okay.
Any, anyone else? Okay.
Need a motion? Now we need a motion to.
Yeah, I was just gonna, thank you very much.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate it.
Sit down. Okay. Do I hear a motion?
I move to, uh, grant the extension requested per the, um, Haverty Grace Development LLC.
One year.
One-year extension, yes.
All right, here a second?
I'll second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll, um, call for a vote. Chair votes yes. Mr. Garono?
Yes.
Mr. Place?
Yes.
Ms. Chan?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries, and you got another year's extension. Thank you very much. Now, I think this concludes all of our business tonight. If anybody has anything, uh, do I hear a motion that we adjourn?
A motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Good job.
Let's see here.